Good evening, everyone. We want to welcome you all to our city council meeting for Thursday, October 3rd, 2024. It's nice to have a room full of people. Nice to have our fire department here as well. So, thanks for being here. We want to excuse Councilmember Perry Oaks. He's out of town. The opening will be provided by Councilmember John Adams. He'll then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Awesome. I'm just going to open with a prayer. Our Father in heaven, we come before you at this time. We're so thankful unto thee for our many blessings. We're grateful to live in this beautiful city within this amazing state of an incredible country. We're so grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy. We're grateful for all of our ancestors who have worked tirelessly to provide us with such an amazing place to live and to prosper. We ask thee to please bless all of our soldiers and those who are in uniform here and far, that they might be washed over and protected by thee. Please bless this beautiful city of Kaysville and help us to have a wonderful meeting and evening this night in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Okay. If you'll rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have, our first item is Call to the Public. Most of you know how this works. You'll have three minutes to come up and speak to us and share your thoughts. We will not interrupt you or comment. We'll listen and smile back at you. So, thank you for taking the time to be here. The first person is Jill Dredge, followed by Erica, Erica, and then Marilyn Johnson.
Thank you for your efforts regarding the Code Blue and homeless shelters. Due to comments made regarding putting these shelters in the middle of the county, we know that Kaysville may be in the running again for one or both. Illegal, contrary to or forbidden by law, not according to or authorized by law, unlawful, illicit, not sanctioned by official rules, unlicensed and illegitimate. Legal, conforming to, permitted by, or recognized by law rules being in accordance with the law. Why do we have laws? Laws establish standards for acceptable behavior. In society, they ensure that people live safely and peacefully together. Laws protect people's rights and liberties, maintain order and stability, prevent anarchy and chaos, reduce corruption and violent conflicts. What is happening in our state and country reminds me of The Emperor's New Clothes. Unfortunately, it took the innocence of a child to point out what the adults could clearly see but would not face. What happened in Kaysville over a week ago in my neighborhood has forced the child and some of us to see what we need to see. An illegal immigrant had two possible weapons that he picked up somewhere else and entered the family's yard. For what purpose? The fact that he had two possible weapons and black gloves on his hands suggests foul play. If he was looking for water, why didn't he drink the alcohol that he had? The questions that must be asked are: Where did he come from? Why was he in Kaysville? How did he get here? Were there more people with him? Where are they? He had a prior. What was it? Should he have been in jail? How long had he been here? What was his intent? And why won't the media report all of the information? Are laws being broken by federal and state government? Do people in Kaysville and neighboring cities feel safe? Mayor Adams of New York stated that the illegal immigration is the one situation he does not see a way out of and feels that it will destroy his state. This is before a Code Blue and/or homeless illegal immigration center is placed in Kaysville. The suggestion to combine homelessness and illegal immigration is being discussed. One of the reasons Kaysville was considered in the first place is that it's in the middle of the county. Why is that a reason to introduce homelessness, illegal immigration into any city? Utah is a sanctuary state. Do the laws that are being passed here take away the sovereignty of each county and city? We've always known that these homeless shelters could be used for illegal immigrants. What will happen to the homeless people, the young mothers with small children that we heard they were being built for? Will they be safe? Or will the shelters turn into places for illegal immigrants and the homeless citizens will choose to be on the streets? We have accepted illegals from New York and Denver. Have we broken the law by doing this? Now we must figure out how to live with what's been created. I hope our state reps will fight for us as Wyler did for North Salt Lake. Taxpayer money that is supposed to go for emergency funds like earthquakes and things like roads, police, fire department are being spent on illegal immigration issues. Kaysville's kind of had our warning. This is not the place for a Code Blue or a homeless illegal immigration center. We don't have the facilities needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's Erica Harper.
Thanks, Erica.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to back what Jill said. I thought her thoughts were really well-written. And I just wanted to say that I speak for a lot of neighbors, saying that we do have our safety in mind as we face some of these issues. And we appreciate your efforts on all of these matters. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Johnson. I live in the neighborhood for this illegal roquin to a neighborhood. And we're very nervous. We're very scared. We appreciate the quick response of the Kaysville Police. They were wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. But we're worried. If this can happen just up the street to a beautiful little family, father out of town for work, mother there alone with three little children, eight-year-old and six-year-old eating breakfast before going to school at Morgan Elementary, mom upstairs with the new baby, and the kids came running up, and here they are in their yard. And he was there with a hoodie, with a latex glove, with a bat. He had weapons. He had alcohol. He was illegal. He couldn't speak English. It is very frightening. A lot in our neighborhood are young families, and mothers occasionally are left alone. We have a lot of really amazing fathers that have to travel for their work and leave their wife and their children alone. This was very frightening. The father said, he received a call at 7:00 a.m., and it said, "Dad, I think I'm going to die." And he knew something was very wrong. This is very, very frightening. The man was as high as a kite. He was here illegally. He had no documentation. It is very frightening. And we really appreciate all you've done, and we encourage you to continue to battle this. We do not want a homeless shelter which would include illegals. We do not want to open up our community to this kind of thing. And we ask for you to do all you can do to stop this from coming into our area. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate the press release that was recently issued by the Police Department explaining what occurred at this residence home. We also are grateful for the quick response of the police. The home will be demolished in the next couple months, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later in the agenda. But I just wanted to speak to that really fast. The city's been very responsive, as you dot on that. Okay. Let's see. I have a proclamation regarding the Fire Prevention Week that I'll now read. Chief, do you want to read it? Are you reading it?
I'll read it.
You read it.
I'll read it.
Okay. This is our fire chief, Paul Erickson.
Mayor, council, city leaders, residents of Kaysville, thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it. This is a proclamation declaring Fire Prevention Week, October 6th through the 12th. It's the longest-sitting safety campaign in our nation, started in 1922, but I'll read on. Whereas planning, preparedness, and situational awareness are critical in surviving a home fires, this is the message behind this year's Fire Prevention Week campaign: Smoke alarms. Make them work for you. Kaysville City Fire Department has dedicated the safety and security of everyone living, working, and visiting our city. Fire is a serious safety concern both locally and nationally. Since 1922, the National Fire Protection Association has sponsored the public observance of Fire Prevention Week. In 1925, President Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance, making it our nation's longest-running public safety observance. Fire Prevention Week is observed each year during the week of October 9th in commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire, which began on October 8th, 1871, and caused devastating damage. The horrific configuration and kill more than 250 people, left 100,000 homeless, destroyed more than 1,700, 400 homes, or structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres of land. During Fire Prevention Week, children, adults, and teachers learn how to stay safe in the case of fire. Firefighters provide life safety, public education, decrease numbers and casualties caused by drastic fires. It be resolved that... Mayor Tran... Ma'am, do you have it there by any chance?
I do.
Do you want to read just that last paragraph, please?
Okay, sure. Therefore be it resolved that I, Tamara Tran, Kaysville City Mayor and Kaysville City Council Members, proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Kaysville City, Utah. I encourage everyone in Kaysville to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergencies, and respond immediately when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, chief.
Do you want to sign this? Do you have a...
I don't have a hard copy, but...
Here.
Thank you.
Sign that.
Sure. Thank you.
You want this one? I can take this one?
Thank you. Yeah. Sure. Yeah. We would love to get a picture with our fire department and our fire chief. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, sir. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks for all the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are so lucky in Kaysville. We've got outstanding people. Thank you, fire department, and thank you, Officer Thompson, for being here as well. Okay. I'll now turn the mic over to Community Development Department Director Melinda Greenwood for her annual report.
Thank you, mayor, council. It's nice to be here with you this evening, especially with items that aren't controversial. So, I'll give an update of our department, some of the things that we do. And reporting this late in the year, just to let you know, the focus of this report is calendar year '23, but I've also updated the statistics to include year-to-date for the data that we track. So, our department is responsible for business licensing. We have a building division that is responsible for building permits, plan reviews, and building inspections. Planning and zoning, that's where most of the controversy comes from, and then code enforcement. So, we have eight full-time employees. The director, our business licensing officer, is Mindy Edstrom. Our building official is Jim Day. And then our two inspectors are Jason Gordy, as we call him, and then we have two permit techs, Becky and April. Our senior planner, Ann, just started at the end of June. She's been fantastic so far. And so, it's nice to have a full staff. One of the things that is unique about community development is that we generate revenue. There are some departments that do not generate revenue, but we're one that does. And this top orange line is the overall revenue that has been generated by my department over the years. And then the corresponding lines at the bottom, yellow, is plan check fees, or sorry, the top orange is building permits. Then we have plan check fees, blue is business licenses, and then that gray is the planning and zoning fees. So, I'll go through the building division first. We have had, over the last couple of years, a bit of a decline in the number of permits that have been issued. We had about 120 less from '22 to '23, but that's, I think, to be expected, given the higher interest rates that we had. And then, year-to-date, we have 431 permits that have been issued. So, you can see in the chart with the green label, the total building permit fees. So, those fees from the building division go to pay for our staff, the classes that they need to take to remain, or to keep their licensing. It pays for the code books that they need, vehicles. So, we did have, and you can see, there is fluctuation here, year-to-year, over what those revenues are. Some years, we have, like in fiscal year '22, we had a large commercial project that pulled a permit, the Young Truck and Trailer. And so, those revenues in '22 were a little bit higher. Last year, didn't have as much going on commercial. And then, of course, this year, we're at about $420,000. So, most of our building permits are residential. You can see here, we're kind of hovering the last five years or so between, you know, 25 and 40 commercial building permits. So, that could be anything from a tenant improvement in addition to a commercial building, you know, or a completely new commercial building, like we have with Jack in the Box. So, new home permits, again, not surprising. 2006 has been the highest year that I have data going back for. And then, of course, again, the last couple of years, we have had some decline in residential building permits. And I think now that some of the interest rates are going down, we'll probably see that those home permits go up again. But I also think that is symptomatic of just, we have not had any large tracts of subdivisions come through the city the last couple of years. They've been smaller. They've been 12 lots, 14 lots. So, that, I think, also is a reason behind that. So, the other, the rest of the permits that we have, other residential, this could be a basement finish, it could be HVAC replacement. It's not commonly known that you should get a building permit if you're going to replace your water heater. So, these numbers would be anything from a basement finish to a water heater. The software that we started using in 2020 also tracks the number of inspections that we do. So, 2020, I don't think we started using that software until partway through the year. Also, that was COVID, so those numbers are a little bit lower. But we do keep our inspectors quite busy, even with some of the drop in those permit numbers. So, on average, looks like I did not grab the right chart on that, but on average, I think we had 23, about 510 permits, or inspections, a month. So, a drop from '22 or '23, and then, average per day was about, I think actually it was about 20 inspections. Sorry I didn't get that updated. Next, I'll go over business licensing. This is something that has, I think, stayed quite steady. Although you can see in, at least with the business license revenues, in fiscal year '18 and '19, those revenues did drop, and that's due to state code that changed, that eliminated requirements for some types of businesses, home occupations, to get licenses. So, those numbers have been a little bit lower since then, but generally speaking, we're right around 1,100 business licenses. And it's a pretty even split, for the most part, between our home occupations and our commercial business licenses. Planning and zoning, this top chart just shows how many applications that we have processed. Last year, total, we took 40 items to Planning Commission, and year-to-date, we're at 21. However, the beginning of this year, state code required us to amend our subdivision ordinance, and those items, the subdivisions can no longer come to an elected body. And the council chose, because subdivisions are an administrative item, which means essentially once all of the laws are met, we are obligated to approve that. So, instead of taking those to Planning Commission, we have pulled those out, and we're doing those administratively. However, we are still using a public process to inform the public. We're putting sign-out on the property. We have a comment form when we do have an active subdivision, where people can submit comments. And then, you know, we relay to the council if we have any comments that come in on that. And so, we've had a total this year of 14 subdivision items, and that includes preliminary plat, final plat, lot-line adjustments, or that could also be a lot line, or a lot consolidation, where two lots would be combined into one. I wanted to spend a little bit of time on code enforcement. In the years past that I have reported, I've mentioned that we've had kind of difficulties tracking our code enforcement items. So, I'm happy to report that in January of this year, we started using the same software that we use for business licensing to track these code enforcement cases. So, we also purchased an iPad, so we can go out to the field, take pictures with the iPad, automatically upload them from there into the software system, and just kind of have an easier process, especially when those cases do stack up. It's a lot easier for us to be able to have the iPad to do everything on. Or if I'm out and about, and I can go, or I go out and take photos, it's really easy to just airdrop my photos and then get them uploaded that way. So, I would anticipate that now that we're actually tracking our code enforcement cases effectively, that you'll see numbers be a little bit higher for the next couple of years. Code enforcement is something that, and I've talked about this before, but oftentimes, code enforcement complaints will come to council, and we're happy to work on those when they're referred, you know, you generally then refer them to us. Code enforcement is a really difficult task. There's a lot of factors that go into that, but oftentimes, the public thinks that the city can go in and do things that we can't. And we always try, I mean, throughout my career, I have come to the conclusion that really trying to get voluntary compliance is the best path forward on these code enforcement cases. Usually, people are upset because we're coming and knocking on their door, telling them that they have violations. They're often upset because they're saying, "Why didn't my neighbor come and talk to me about this?" We do encourage that communication. I think that helps to have good neighbors, but sometimes, you know, people don't feel comfortable, or you may have a resident who's just not responsive to that. But to, neither, well, this picture is not from Kaysville. I didn't want to put anyone's home up here for everyone to see. But, you know, this is often what things look like when people complain. And you can see from the numbers here that the complaint we get the most is weeds. And this number of 136 doesn't really reflect the number of violations, just the number of complaints that we've received. So, there could be some in here that is a duplicate for a property, but also, on my next slide, I'll go over and show a recent complaint that has been submitted, that I have been working on, just due to the complexity of it, has all of these issues associated with it. So, they're running a business that does not have a city business license. There's deleterious matter in front of the home, on the side, on the driveway. There's unregistered vehicles. There's unpermitted work with, that should have had a building permit. There's an expired building permit for work that was permitted correctly in the beginning but has since expired. There's no fence around a pool in the rear yard. The sidewalk is broken to the point where it has to be replaced. And then, there's also been reports of illicit discharge. So, going back to this slide, we have that listed in here as just one case. So, these cases, again, residents often get frustrated with the amount of time that it takes sometimes to get these resolved. Again, they think that we can go and do more than we can. So, back to, I just kind of wanted to give a quick overview of what we do when we do, when we get code enforcement complaints that come in. And most of those complaints come through a form that's submitted on our website. We go out into the field and verify whether or not the complaint is valid. We take the photos, as I mentioned, we upload the photos so that we have those for reference. Sometimes, it'll take us quite a while to even track down contact information. So, if it's a property that has a house and a utility account, that's pretty easy. We just talk to Cheryl, and she gets us like that. But when it's a vacant property or undeveloped property, sometimes that can take, you know, three, even four weeks to try and get contact information. And so, during that waiting period, when we're trying to find out, who do we contact, apart from just sending a letter to the address listed on the county records, you know, people are feeling like we're not doing anything and that no progress has been made. So, a lot of these, as I explained in the previous violation that had a number of those items on the same property, we're constantly coordinating with our Public Works Department, our Police Department, because we don't have a way to deter, I mean, other than looking at a sticker, we don't have a way to determine if a licensed, or a vehicle is licensed or not. And then, we do get a lot of parking complaints that come to us, but in the end, we can't do parking enforcement. That has to be something that comes from police powers. But we usually send an initial notice, or a courtesy call, an email, or a letter, and give a reasonable amount of time for them to come into compliance. A lot of times, that doesn't happen, and we have to send a second notice. And then, our practice has been that we'll send a third notice and give an additional deadline, and if that does not take care of the issue, then we go through the process to compile all of the data that we've, and that's notes where, you know, left a voicemail on this day, or through our phone system, we can actually text people. So, we sent a text to this number. Here's the photos. We checked back. Nothing's been done. So, then, when there is full failure to comply, we compile all that information, and then, unfortunately, send it over to our city attorney to see what the best path forward of addressing those items is. And sometimes, it would be filing charges. Sometimes, just even a threatening letter from the attorney works. But that said, if we do... with our Public Works Department, our Police Department, because we don't have a way to deter, I mean, other than looking at a sticker, we don't have a way to determine if a licensed or a vehicle is licensed or, or not. And then we do get a lot of parking complaints that come to us, but in the end, we can't do parking enforcement. That has to be something that comes from police powers. But we usually send an initial notice or a courtesy call, an email, or a letter and give a reasonable amount of time for them to come into compliance. A lot of times that doesn't happen and we have to send a second notice. And then our practice has been that we'll send a third notice and give an additional deadline. And if that does not take care of the issue, then we go through the process to compile all of the data that we've, and that's notes where, you know, left a voicemail on this day, or through our phone system, we can actually text people. So we sent a text to this number. Here's the photos. We checked back. Nothing's been done. So then when there is full failure to comply, we compile all that information and then unfortunately send it over to our city attorney to see what the best path forward of addressing those items is. And sometimes it would be filing charges, sometimes just even a threatening letter from the attorney works. But that said, if we do kind of reach that end of the road, then the responsibility of trying to move forward with that does get transferred over to the city attorney. And with Mr. Mills being our only attorney and prosecuting all of the items that come out of our Police Department, we do also try and set expectations with the public that, you know, these items may take longer to get to than other crimes that are coming out of the Police Department and those charges. So that said, I know I spent a little bit of time on code enforcement, but really for the benefit of the public, we do our best. We don't have staff that are assigned specifically to do code enforcement. And so it's me sometimes, Mindy, Ann. We've even had, especially when we had staffing vacancy earlier this year, we pulled in some of our inspectors or our permit techs to just go out and get the job done. And so, you know, we'll continue to do our best with all of that, but just kind of wanted to let the council know and the public as well that those, those code enforcement cases are really difficult to work through. I also wanted to mention that this year, we have had three complaints come to us via the Health Department of people living in trailers or RVs on property and dropping raw sewage onto the ground. So the Health Department can deal with that raw sewage portion. We have to deal with the illegal living. And camping is not allowed in an RV or a trailer, except for in an RV park in Kaysville, which we don't have. So I, we have had, I think, all total this year, about seven of those complaints. We just got two more this week with people living in trailers or motorhome. And so we work to address those, but those are very delicate as well because we don't want to create a homeless situation. We want to try and be reasonable with having enough time for people to find an alternate location to live. But just to know that that's, I think, becoming more and more of an issue than what we've seen in the past as well. So with that, I think that was everything that I wanted to cover. So happy to answer. Any questions any of you may have?
Anyone have any questions or comments? Melinda, thank you for everything that you and your department do. We, you're very busy. You're very busy. You're wonderful in helping us and Planning Commission and keeping things moving in our city. So we appreciate you. Thank you.
I've got great staff, so it's a team effort.
You all do a great job. Thank you. All right. Does someone want to, oh, conflicts of interest. Anything? No? Okay. Seeing none, let's move to the consent item agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion to move consent items 5A and B?
I'll make a motion that we move to approve consent items A and B.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, work items. A resolution amending the consolidated fee schedule. Who wants to take this, Nick? Thank you.
This is a fairly straightforward. Our Police Department recently noticed that in comparison to a lot of other jurisdictions, the fees that we were charging to compile reports were significantly lower. So they're asking, in conjunction with Chief Oberg, he asked me to present this, but they're asking that these just be raised. One of the problems that we have is at the prior rates, we're just losing, we're just subsidizing every one of these requests at a very high level. And surprisingly, we get a large number of grandma requests or records requests. Anytime, basically anytime there's a traffic accident in the city, both insurance companies are going to send a records request for those traffic reports, for those accident reports, so they can handle those claims. And then we get a number of other requests from media outlets, from victims, from other people. And we're happy to fulfill those. We just like to not subsidize them as heavily. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions on this? Councilmember Hunt?
I just had a question about bicycle registration and fingerprinting services. I mean, I feel like those are kind of things that have gone to the side. Is that just because we don't get any requests for those? Or, I mean, we have several bicycles that are not registered. Don't break it in my stride.
We did register bicycles for a number of years. My understanding is that people just don't really take advantage of that service and haven't for several, several years. And so when I asked Chief Ellington about that, he couldn't recall the last time that we had one. And then we haven't done fingerprinting here at the city for probably four or five years to the public. We've sent people down to the county, to the sheriff's office to be fingerprinted. And that's really just a staffing issue. It's quite disruptive to our records staff to, you know, start to get into something and somebody shows up and they go out and fingerprint them. And we were doing it, my understanding is that we were doing it kind of irregularly enough that it was kind of like we were constantly having to get up to speed. Not that it's a difficult process, but it was taking longer. And we haven't heard very many complaints about sending people to the county either.
Thanks, Nick. Thank you. Great questions. Anyone else? Councilmember Jackson?
Just on the bicycle registration aspect, a lot of folks are riding e-bikes and motorized bikes and going very fast. I even have little kids in my neighborhood riding those bikes. Has there been any discussion of requiring those bikes to be registered? And I almost think that's something that should be discussed versus just like your regular pedal bike?
No, that's something that Chief Oberg and the Police Administration and I are in consultation with. And we're drafting an ordinance that we're going to present to you in the, in the coming months about those e-bikes and that kind of stuff.
Excellent.
Because they can go quite fast and we're seeing them all over the city. And they're potentially very, very dangerous for the riders.
Yeah, I think that would be good. And then in the documents, I didn't see what we were charging before, like for photos, for example. Do you have those numbers? I'm just curious how much of a job we're doing.
Yes. So in the past, we've charged $5, if my memory serves, $5 per incident report. And that's been the only charge that we've had. So we're adding the charge for photos and we're adding the charge for video recordings. In the past, people have, the only thing we've been able to charge is the $5 for, you know, maybe five photos, maybe 100 photos. And so that's one of the reasons that we're adding the photos and the video recordings in is so that we, so that people have a little bit more ability to pick and choose what they want. Maybe an insurance company only needs the incident reports. That saves the records staff quite a bit of time because they don't have to pull those photos. They don't have to pull that audio video. If it's one cost, if it's $5 for everything, then almost every insurance agency is like, "Yeah, just send it to us." Like, we'd rather have more information than less. But we're, I think we're hopeful that by bifurcating this out into these three separate charges, that requesters will think a little bit harder about what they want, what they actually want.
Okay. I have no problem with the city charging insurance companies a lot more than any other citizens, but I think this is a no-brainer and makes sense. So thanks.
Anyone else? Nope? Okay, thank you. All right. Would someone like to make a motion on, let's see, on the consolidated fee schedule?
I'll make a motion that we move a resolution amending the consolidated fee schedule to an action item. Is that what you'd like? Yeah, to an action item to be voted upon in the not-too-distant future?
Okay, sounds good.
Nice second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Hunt?
Aye.
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 Okay, thanks. Did we need to do that? We really didn't, did we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay, I was gonna say, yeah. Sorry, guys. We, it's been a minute. Okay. Thank you. We, we need to pass it at a future meeting, correct?
I'm sorry.
We need, we need to pass that as a, at a future meeting.
Yeah, well, the typical procedure on these kind of items is that at one meeting, it's a work item. The next meeting, it'll be an action item and we'll pass it as an action item at the next meeting.
Thank you. It's been a minute since we moved a work item. So, okay, thanks. All right. Item 6B, discussion regarding conveyance of UDOT surplus property at 1280 East Crestwood Road to Kaysville City. Jason?
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor, as you alluded to a little earlier in the meeting, there's a property that's vacated, owned by UDOT, that's at the corner of the Frontage 89 Road and Crestwood Road, 1280 East Crestwood. And that's, that's a site where we believe there's been some squatters living possibly at times. And it's also a place where we believe this, this burglar was arrested. The adjacent property is to the south of this property is where, where that arrest took place. We've been actually working with UDOT for several weeks on having them convey this property. They have no more use for it and they've agreed to convey it to Kaysville at no charge. Essentially, there's a $10 nominal charge they're, they're going to assess. But before we proceed with this, we wanted to at least bring it to your attention. And it's actually, there's no council item or council action required for this. We just need to send UDOT a letter saying that we will accept this property and then they will record it in Kaysville's name. So we've already prepared that letter. It'll go out tonight, assuming the council's okay with that. The condition from UDOT is that this property be turned into a park one day or used for right-of-way purposes. So the city actually owns the 10 and a half acres to the west of this property. And the intent is that property will one day become some type of a green space park use. So this actually works well into our, our future plans. We've already started the process of preparing for demolition of the house. In fact, we were able to get an agreement with UDOT this morning that allows us early access to the property. So we've got access key to the property and we're starting the environmental inspections very soon. And then we're, we're in the process of getting quotes for demolition. So our hope is within the next two months, if not a lot sooner, we'll have that house removed. And again, just wanted to bring this to the council's attention before we proceed.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Councilmember Blackham?
I just have a couple of questions. I mean, I hate property being encumbered by anything, but it's okay in this case. But I want to know if there any reason, did any staff members have any reason not to take this property?
Great question. We talked about it and there really isn't. It actually is a great piece of property, being it's very flat and with access to both, you know, both roads. Should the 10 and a half acres to the western into a park, it provides us a great opportunity for maybe the parking lot area for that future park.
One of the other follow-up questions I have, if we decide to do this and it becomes part of the park, then we could put the park structure there, the houses, say, the tractors and lawnmowers. We wouldn't be encumbered of not being able to do that because that's part of the park, right? We would be okay with that?
That's my understanding. When we spoke with UDOT about those kind of auxiliary, I guess auxiliary uses for a park, like a parking lot or those types of things, they said, "Yeah, that's part of what they'd consider park." So that should be okay.
And then the only other thing I thought of was, you know, if we for some reason got some sort of a commercial use that wanted to go there, because it is a busy street, it's a busy intersection, we, I'm just saying, you know, I hate to be encumbered by something that you can't take away, but it would go back to UDOT and then it would go out to bid. And so that would, not saying that would ever happen, but I hate seeing properties encumbered that you can't. We, we're encumbered with a piece right now that we're having problems with out west, so.
That is correct. If, if we were to use it for any other purpose other than what's stipulated in the agreement, it'd have to go back to UDOT and then they'd auction it to the highest bidder.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Well, and because I just mentioned that we do have so many from the neighborhood here representing, I, kudos to the city and, and UDOT for working this quickly. They were already working on it. We were already working with UDOT, but they've, they've been able to, to respond quickly. And so we appreciate that. Any, oh, sure, okay. All right. So do we need to, you said we don't need a vote on this?
Correct. No action needed unless there's any concern or question.
Any concerns about this transfer? No? Okay.
All right. We'll put that letter out tonight and possibly by tomorrow, they'll take it down and get it recorded, so.
Yeah, that'll be fantastic. Yeah. So, all right. So that brings us to the Code Blue Shelter update. So I'll tell you what we don't know. We really don't have a lot of information still. As you know, the task force for the county submitted the warming bus plan. It lacked funding because the state created a law without funding for, for the law. And so the plan was deemed to fail because, well, just, it didn't pass because it didn't have that funding component. The task force for the county is no longer needed because now it's between the county and the state. And I don't know who actually makes the decision at this point. It's still, I don't know. It's, it's still a conversation. We did, several of us, Councilmember Hunt and Jason, and I attended a county commission work session last week. And they kind of talked about this, this issue, just that they're, they haven't made any decisions. No decisions have been made yet. And so as a city, we will continue to support our opinion that this is not the right location. We don't have the wraparound services. We don't have the facilities. We lack transportation opportunities. And we do have so many other ways in which Kaysville is representing as, as being a help to the population that is vulnerable. And they're our neighbors and friends and so we understand that. And we provide some other services. And so we will continue as a city to, to message it that way because that's really how we all feel. And we have the consensus of the council and the staff in saying that Kaysville's not the right location for a shelter of any kind, temporary, permanent, Code Blue winter. We don't have any additional information yet. So that's where we're at as far as that goes. We have received some, some emails about, you know, illegal aliens coming into Kaysville. I just want you to be, we want to remind everybody, we do have a no camping law in Kaysville. We passed an ordinance, I think it was last year, didn't we? So that if we are aware of campers, you know, illegally camping, please let the city know. Some of these things, you know, we, we need our community and our residents to police because we just don't have the police to be able to, to go out there constantly. So if you see something, call the city, let the city know. As you've heard in Melinda's report, we take every complaint very seriously and the city follows up. And sometimes it takes a little bit of time just to work through the process to find out who the right points of contact are. But just know that Kaysville takes your complaints very seriously, whether it's weeds or someone doing something illegal. Just make sure that you share that information because a lot of times people will post on Facebook. I get it, Facebook is great, but it doesn't help because the staff aren't sitting on Facebook all day. And I might look at Facebook, but I am also not sitting on Facebook all day. So please make the call to the city so that they can handle those complaints. And we appreciate everyone's proactiveness in that. Does any?
I, I just want to make a motion that we keep the Code Blue Shelter update as a work item on the agenda so that we stay on top of it. And, you know, I encourage anybody who can go to the work sessions that the county has. We try to take and have representation there, but obviously anybody else that would like to go there and represent Kaysville, I think everything helps.
And I will let you know, from our perspective, we have, we've been very loud and very clear in our position. There's no misunderstanding where Kaysville stands. We've talked to our county commissioners for sure, our state legislators, the Department of Homeless Services. We've talked to various agencies around the state that are in this, in this space explaining why, why we feel like there is another location in the county. If it has to have a permanent location, we're not even convinced that it really needs to have a permanent location. But I will tell you that we will continue to stand our ground there and we will continue to, to send this message. So at the end of the day, can the city actually do anything? You guys, if it's a, if it's a state permission or a county permission, there's, I mean, we can't. But we will definitely continue to communicate where we stand on it and that we oppose it. So any other comments, questions? Okay, so that being said, we'll turn the time over to councilmember reports. Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, just one item I'd like to share. There's a park just north of the cemetery, Hodge Hollow Park, and has a beautiful new playset for kids. I think it's been, the new set's been there for about a year and a half. There used to be a bench there and there's not a bench there right now. And I stopped by just to look at it to make sure there was no bench. And there were a few residents there with kids just standing, a few mothers just standing as their kids were playing. And I talked to them a little bit and they, they indicated that they would very much like a bench there. And I think every park, we all know that parents with kids, it's a tough job and usually they take their kids to the park to get some relief. And so I would like to just instruct or ask that the Parks Department make that a top priority to get a bench at that park. That's all I want to say, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Blackham?
I just have a question. Did anybody make it to the DATC lunch today?
Yes, we did. And we'll let Councilmember Adams talk about it. You were in the Davis, Davis Technical College Foundation?
Yes, the Davis Technical College Foundation. Yes, the Davis Technical College Foundation. Today was the, the foundation board puts on sort of a gratitude lunch for all the people who contribute to scholarships and do things essentially for the college over the course of a year. And Kaysville was awarded, man, best.
Community.
Community partner, community partner for our efforts with helping them with a police officer, helping them with kind of navigating what we dealt with, with the CBL range. And mostly, they just love being here in Kaysville. They have close to 8,000 students. The cost for, you know, picking up a trade averages between 1,200 to $2,000. And the scholarships that we give out on the foundation, I'm on the foundation board, the scholarships we give out essentially will pay for all of their schooling. And so there's no, there's no financial reason to not go to Davis Tech. And they're the, hands down, the number one place in the country for technical college. Just recently, and I'll just say this as the last thing, recently they partnered with Snow College to be the, you can graduate from Davis Tech and then transfer 100% of your credits to Snow College. There isn't one credit that's, that gets left behind. And within like, you know, a matter of a year, you could have your associate's degree. So it's, it's really a sweet, sweet setup. And I encourage anybody else to look at it. But yeah, go, go Kaysville, we won the award. It was a great lunch.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Hunt.
So our scarecrow walk is still going on until Monday. So if you have not gone and seen the scarecrows, go see the scarecrows. They're a lot of fun. The city's got one, it's pretty cool. The youth council did it and they put a lot of hard work into it, so just go check it out. It's a fun community event.
Thank you so much, everyone, for your update report. I just wanted to just circle back to this Code Blue conversation really fast. In speaking to stakeholders on this, I, I really feel confident that they're going to do the very best they can to find a location that makes sense in a city that makes sense. We've, we've done everything possible to advocate for a good solution. I still personally, and I think the council's with me, I believe they are, as far as thinking that a warming bus is a good idea. You know, we provided a plan for the, for the county to submit to the state, and some people have said, oh yeah, that doesn't seem very humane. Well, it makes a lot more sense to be able to put people in a place where they can actually sleep and lay down, charge their phones, feel safe, have their pets with them. And it's something that's not very expensive, relatively speaking, to us. And our personal budgets, yes, it is expensive, but for a, for the state to fund this program as a pilot program, I feel like is a really good idea and a really good alternative to putting a facility in a location just because it's convenient. We all are leaders in this space, in, in our cities and in our county and our state. And, you know, coming up with a convenient solution is very rarely the right thing to do. And I think that leadership extends and things outside the box, and I'm hopeful that that will happen in this situation. And when we actually have an update to share, we will let you know what that is, so. Any other comments or anything? Okay, Jason, do you have anything?
Just some calendar items, Mayor. As just a reminder, we're canceling the next regular scheduled meeting, which would be on Thursday, the 17th. And there will be a council work session meeting on Friday, the 25th, at 8:00 AM. So just make sure that's on everyone's calendars. And then I believe we are still planning on a Davis County Commission meeting. And Melinda, you may know more than I do on this, but I believe that's 10:00 AM on Tuesday, the 8th, next week.
Yes.
Which they'll consider the CRA. Great.
Yes. Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. So the city is requesting a grant, and it requires a partnership between the Davis County Commission and the school district and mosquito abatement, I think, and some other, some other groups. And basically, it's an, it's an opportunity for, for us to be able to reinvest in our city, some development. And then they take a little bit of a break on their tax portion. And then hopefully, because we've invested in our city and they've invested in our city, it will grow and it will result in, in a profit, which, which they always do work out. So, so it's a great partnership. We're hoping to get that approved. All right, oh, I wanted to just mention Trunk or Treat, since we don't have another meeting in October. It's October 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the police station, just in the parking lot out here. So bring your children, your grandchildren, your families, and come to Trunk or Treat. We look forward to seeing everybody. Okay, thank you, everyone. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Trunk or Treat, do you want Monster Dinosaur?
Paul!
I think whichever you want to do.
Monster Dinosaur.
No, we're not doing that. It's good, but it's too much.
No, no. Wrong already.
What do you think, Nate? Monster Dinosaur.
Wrong.
Yeah, I like Monsters.
Monsters are easy.
We don't have to go and, you know, watch the trees.
I wasn't here last year, was I? I was, I think I missed it last year.